...of August 18th, 2014. We just had a closed session from 5:00 to 6:00. I'd ask council if we have anything to report out of closed session.
No actions taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we will then return and I want to call the meeting to order again and have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ania?
Here.
Councilmember Shalhoun?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
And Mayor Holly?
Here. Okay, thank you very much and would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, ready, begin.
(inaudible)
And we had a roll call and you'll note that Mr. Gastino's not present. If you didn't know this, his mother passed away last week and he's still dealing with those issues. And I had the occasion actually to attend the services for Mrs. Gastino, Donna Gastino, and I just want to say it's a real loss to the city of Crescent City. She was very, very active in a number of areas, including musically, participating in LRT and teaching private piano lessons as my daughter went and had piano lessons for years and years. So, anyway, she will be lost and our thoughts are with Ron tonight. Okay. So, moving on then, under acknowledgements, we have acknowledgement of September as Library Month. So, we have Benita Cabrera here to talk with us.
So, I am a First Five Service Corps Vista and a lot of people in our community doesn't know what a Vista is. It's a part of the AmeriCorps program. Only AmeriCorps members provide direct services and Vistas provide services behind the scenes, like creating programs, making spreadsheets, you know, all that real fun, exciting stuff. But the great thing is, is I get to do my service at Delnort Reads Literacy Program and September being Literacy Month is a really good time for us to be able to put ourselves out in the community and let people know that Delnort Reads is available to folks who want to learn to read or learn to take their GED, English as a Second Language, early childhood family literacy. And so, as a First Five Service Corps Vista, my focus is zero to five age group. And zero to five includes zero to five and moms and dads and brothers and sisters and grandparents. So, while my focus is on zero to five, we're working on programs and providing services to all folks in our community. So, being a Vista in the literacy program has been really eye-opening for me. I always had a concept of what low literacy, of how the effect is on poverty, but what I didn't realize and what I do now is that learning to read isn't just a way out of poverty, it's a way of freedom, financial freedom, emotional freedom, physical freedom. And I've had an opportunity since February to watch folks learn and to see the excitement when somebody gets it and realize that, you know, we talk about little children being sponges, but adults are sponges too and they're really excited when they have an opportunity to learn something new and I'm really excited about being there until the end of January. So, June, we partnered with Klamath River Early College of the Redwoods and we did a Read-A-Thon and that, the kids raised almost $900 for their first ever Read-A-Thon and they split that money with Delnort Reads. The children thought it would be really exciting to be able to read and raise money to help children have books to read. So, that worked out really well. So, for September, for Literacy Month, we're going to partner with them again and do Scholastic Book Fair at the Cracker School and open some times up to the public for folks to be able to come and purchase books and support Cracker School and their library, helping them get books through the program. And in October, we'll be working in connection with the poker run that happens just after Sea Cruise on Sunday. And so, Delnort Reads is doing things in the community and I'm really excited to be a part of that. And I'd really like to thank my supervisor, Kelly Nolan, because she has been a really great person to work with and if you've ever worked with her or you know her, you know that that must be true. So, thank you for your time and for acknowledging September for Literacy Month.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We have an acknowledgement before us and it's kind of an interesting one. I'd like to go ahead and read that to everyone because of the importance of our libraries here locally. Whereas the need for a literacy, citizenry is undeniably essential for social, economic, and personal growth. And whereas to learn to read is to light a fire, now I'm going to give you some quotes. Victor Hugo, "There is no friend as loyal as a book." Ernest Hemingway, "Literacy is a bridge from misery to hope." Kofi Annan, "Books are uniquely portable magic." Stephen King, "Once you learn to read, you will be forever free." Frederick Douglass, "I cannot live without books." Thomas Jefferson, "There is more treasure in books than in all the pirates' loot on Treasure Island." Walt Disney. And whereas, 20 percent of adults in Delnort County lack basic prose literacy skills. And whereas the year 2014 marks the 30th anniversary for California Library Literacy Services. And whereas the Delnort County Library through Delnort Reads and the California Library Literacy Services offers free one-on-one tutoring for adults living and working in the library district. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Crescent City City Council hereby acknowledge September 2014 as Adult Literacy Awareness Month. In the county of Delnort, we urge our fellow residents to join us in fully appreciating the importance of literacy and to join in the magnificent literacy efforts now being performed by Delnort County Library District and other library schools and nonprofits so inspiring to, in our community. So, thank you again for being here and I'll let you do. Any comments from the council? Yes?
As a social worker, I learned how important literacy is for adults and so, thank you for all the work that you're doing. It really is critical to, it is a key out of poverty and it is, it is a real portal to life and being able to, be able to read. There's a lot of functional illiterate adults all over the world and your work is really very important to helping people lead a better life. So, thank you for all your work and I like this little brochure. I don't know if my girls really appreciated my singing, but I did it anyway when they were babies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, with that then, we'll move on, but thank you for being here and you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. That'd be fine. Okay, going to the consent calendar then. Approval of the regular meeting minutes from August 4, 2014. Receiving and filing the warrant claims list for the period July 26, 2014 through August 8, 2014. We'll receive and file the bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending August 9, 2014, paid on August 15, 2014. Consider for adoption Resolution 2014-32, a resolution of the city of Crescent City endorsing the Safe Surface Transportation Assistance Act access on California State Route 197 and US Highway 199 from US Highway 101 to Interstate 5. And the last matter on the consent calendar is to consider the, consider for adoption Resolution Number 2014-34, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Crescent City amending the Conflict of Interest Code for the city of Crescent City effective August 18, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say that I believe that there could be a group of people in the audience here to address the Highway 199 issue and if so, maybe you could show a number of hands. I would be more than happy to pull that off the consent calendar for public comment.
Sure, I'd like to see if there's a keen interest in that particular matter. Okay, seeing the number of people that intend to speak, we'll go ahead and pull that from the regular consent calendar and we'll deal with that following our consent calendar.
Thank you. And I will move to approve items 1 through 4 and number 6.
Second.
Okay. And is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Okay, seeing none then, we'll bring it back to the council. Would you please pull, is there any other discussion on the council? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalhoun?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So, we'll move to the matter that we removed from the consent calendar and that is Resolution Number 24, 2014-32 regarding the Safe Surface Transportation Assistance Act access on California State Route 197 and US Highway 199 from US 101 to Interstate 5. So, this is open for public comment. Please let us know who you are and whether you're a city or county resident.
Good afternoon, councilmen and councilwomen. Mike Sullivan, I'm a county resident. I'm a district supervisor for District 3, which 199, 197 go through. Also, the chair of the Local Transportation Commission and we are going to all the boards now to reaffirm their resolution and support for something you've already passed and supported in the past is the highway to improve 199, 197 for STAA access. So, the Board of Supervisors passed unanimously last week and we're encouraging you all to do as well. It's extremely important, not only to the business community, but just to the safety of the highway. And of all the accidents we've heard about that currently are happening right now, these are all the more reasons to get the thing fixed. Additionally, besides the safety factor, it's just our, well, in addition to the safety factor, the fact that Last Chance Grade is in such bad shape, 199, 197 may be our only way out if we had a catastrophe happen here. So, the community has signed off on this project as all the boards in the past have supported this. We would encourage you to do the, to reaffirm your position and pass the resolution unanimously. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Chris Howard, resident of Huauchi, manager of Alexander Dairy. I'm here to make sure you guys affirm your support for the resolution and more importantly, reflect back on where we've been with this. It was 2007 when an advocacy committee made up by a few of us from the Chamber of Commerce and with support from the city, the county, the school board, tri-agency, and various other members of this community went down to Sacramento, a very unheard-of county at the time, and went in front of the Transportation Commission, a group of 350 people all looking for money. And we sat there in this large group, waited our turn, and by that time, we went up to the podium and started speaking our story. And it became very emotional for every commissioner up there that was considering our issue because they said, "Why, why are you residents of Delnort County coming to us looking for this project?" And we told them a story that time and how badly we needed this project and why we need it. And we talked about our children, we talked about our future. That conveyed a message to that commission that day that resonated seven years later to the funding of this project. And seven years is a long time to wait, but because of certain individuals in this community, we could potentially wait longer and that could go away if our support isn't shown to the judge considering this case or this injunction. So, I encourage you this evening to steadfast and stay with the resolution and go forward from here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment? And I was remiss, I didn't mention earlier, you did fine, but we do have a three-minute limit for public comment.
Hi, I'm Linda Crockett with United Lily Growers. I just want you to know that United Lily supports the 197, 199 and would appreciate your adoption of this resolution. I'm hearing from the opposition that you can fix the road, but don't allow the STAA trucks, thus no injunction. You need to know that some of these trucks are using the road anyway. Many of my trucks do not know this is a restricted road. Most of my trucks have never been to this part of the United States and most of my trucks have maps that do not show this restriction. The difference in the truck that is allowed on 199 presently and the difference in the standard STA-A is usually about five feet in length, it's just longer. I have a crop that has to be in the cooler on a set date in order to perform in the greenhouse for Easter. I ship all over the United States and Canada. I've experienced several truck cancellations due to this restricted road. A legal 48-foot truck is practically obsolete. I watched the Board of Supervisors tape and listened to the opposition voicing that these STA-A trucks are big, heavy, and cause bigger spills. It would be interesting to ask the opposition, what is an STA-A truck? From what I am hearing, it's not from this planet. It's just really big and it's really heavy and they are faster, faster. Well, we have Rob Miller here from Doster-Moat and he has over 40 years in trucking and he is here to explain what an STA-A truck is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crockett. Other public comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Rob Miller and I'm president at Doster-Moat in Smith River and we've been in business for 57 years and our family's been involved in it for 48 years. And there's a huge issue with trucking and the economic development in Delnort County. One of the reasons why businesses can't come here is because it's exceedingly difficult to get product in and out. I've been listening and watching and reading the articles in the newspaper and watching some of the stuff on the TV from the previous meetings and so forth and there's an awful lot of misinformation about STA trucks. I have a truck sitting in my driveway right now which has a legal tractor attached to it and has a legal trailer attached to it, 65 feet long. When I attach a 53-foot trailer, which is what's going to start coming, at this moment, because of sliding axles, it has a shorter wheelbase and a better turning radius than a legal truck. That's not all STA trucks, but that's a 70-foot truck that I, that I own, I can't drive it on the highway. It has a shorter wheelbase and the turning radiuses are better. Now, that doesn't mean that all the trucks coming down that road are going to be that way. Doesn't mean STA trucks are heavier in weight because California has an 80,000-pound law. No truck in California is heavier than 80,000 and most trucks are 80,000 pounds. So, weight is not an issue. Length is an issue, but they have sliding axles. Back in 1984, when they established the law, they did not have sliding axles. They had 45-foot lumber trailers hauling lumber out of here and the overall length of the vehicle was 65 feet. Today, we're in the 21st century, remember. Today, they're sliding axles and the wheelbases are better even though the truck is longer. So, it's a real important issue for economic viability in Humboldt and Delnort County to try to get better access. Been working on it for a long time to the south. We need to get it to the east, to get it over to I-5 and have access and then there's a potential for some economic development in Delnort County. And it's really important because there's four lily bulb growers here today and 45 years ago, there were 26. And part of that reason, along with other things, is competition in the marketplace and pricing of product and it's exceedingly difficult to get stuff in and out of here. I certainly wish you would reaffirm your, your support of the resolution and hopefully we can get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Zeke Arms. I'm the acting manager of Hastings Bulb and Smith River Farms, Easter lily growers in the Smith River Valley. And I'm going to try to get a reward for using as little time as possible here.
Okay.
But I just came here to show my support for passing this resolution, shipping Easter lilies. The trucking involved in shipping an Easter lily is becoming a higher percentage of our total cost every year and keeping that number down is a good thing, so.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Other public comments?
Hi, Wes White with Ambro, the CEO. I'm also here on behalf as a spokesperson for Bentendorf Trucking, Curry Transfer, and South Coast Lumber. In total, if you do a one-way trip through the canyon, this is representing about 290 trucks through that canyon every day. I'm sorry, a week, excuse me, a week. Of that, 95 of those are using 199 only and 190 are using both 199 and 197. We all are, would like you to reaffirm your conviction to this, the improvements on 199, 197. Specifically, South Coast Lumber, who runs a lot of trucks, the majority of the trucks are running about 155 a week through there, could reduce the number of loads going through that canyon if they had these improvements in the, in the highway. So, we just would like to reaffirm, you to reaffirm your belief in this helping the, helping the economic viability. I think you guys all know what's happened with Ambro Force Products and some of that had to do with transportation costs. So, who knows what might have happened if we had lower transportation costs. So, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Hello, my name's Matt Westbrook with Palmer Westbrook Inc., cattle producing and Easter lily producing company in Smith River. This Highway 197, 199 project is really important to us as a business in our shipping costs and bringing product in and out. The longer trucks that come in now have to go all the way up to Roseburg and be rerouted down 101 then back out, which is a huge, huge extra cost and burden on, on our business. And just like to say I'm really in support of this and hope to see the resolution pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing no further public comments, I'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Ania?
I have a few comments. You know, I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting last week and I listened to the people talking about this and I heard a member of the opposition there talk about how it would have no economic impact on our county and meant, they mentioned Walmart and Home Depot and, you know, I just couldn't believe that, so I did some investigating of my own. I guess that's 30 years of being a police officer does that to you. And I went to Walmart and let me tell you something about Walmart. Talked to their manager today. Walmart gets four truckloads of produce a week, four truckloads. They order a certain amount that fit in the longer trucks, but they can't get the longer trucks here because of the rules. So, they smash the stuff in there, I'm using the word smash, into the smaller trucks. So, when some of the produce gets here, it's already damaged, they don't put it out. So, they only get four shipments a week. So, they have to load those smaller trucks in Eugene, Oregon to bring them to 199 and it does have an effect on the economy. I couldn't believe that since they passed this law in 1982, that 199 is not part of it. It's like we're in another world up here. Now, I personally travel 199 two or three times a month and that doesn't count when I have to take relatives to a doctor's appointment in Medford. And it's, we talk about, the other side talks about public safety and they're using public safety wrong. It's public safety for us to have safer roads to drive. It's not about just trucks, it's about cars and people going over to Medford for various reasons. Plus, those, those safety improvements are for us also. And I'm also the vice chair of the Local Transportation Commission and we've been trying for 10 years to get funding. It's very difficult to get funding, most of it goes to Southern California and the Bay Area. So, now we have the funding to do this and by the way, that's our taxpayer money. We pay taxes for that. We see most of our money going to other parts of the state. Now, it's coming to us, it's our turn and the other side waits till the very last minute when construction's going to start and they stop it temporarily. So, let's hope that we get our funding because it's not about just trucks. It's about, it's about people that drive. You ever drive to Medford? It's about you. It's about you to having safer turns. It's not just about trucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ania.
I just wanted to say I was very happy to see this back on our agenda tonight. This entire process has been very frustrating and I'm very happy that everybody is reaffirming our belief in the project to be completed because I'm not going to reiterate what everybody has said here tonight, but I, I truly believe that it is a big key and driver for economic development and safety. And I think that it's the best time for us to stand together again as a community and not let the small majority win.
Thank you. Murray?
I too am on the Transportation, Local Transportation Commission. I have been on it since I was elected in 2008, so I know how long we've been working on this project. Some of the people who are not in favor of this project are my friends, but I have to say that the arguments are very weak. One of the arguments is that the bridge in question is not that old, it's nearly 90 years old and we know that infrastructure is a critical issue throughout our nation, so I'm sorry, but that, it's a very old bridge and it could go at any time and we would be in big trouble if that bridge goes out. I think it is a huge safety issue because of what Councilmember Ania was saying. It's a huge safety factor. And the other argument that we would be bringing over more trucks if High 5 was closed due to snow, that, that doesn't make any sense at all. I mean, you would not want to drive over here just to get down, down south because of the snow. I mean, High 5 doesn't even close that often when there is snow, so it doesn't make any sense. So, I feel that this project is critically important for safety and economic development, so I feel that this resolution needs to be passed tonight and it's very important to us.
Thank you. I too sit on the council, on the commission and so, there's, there's actually the, the city council by the rules of the commission have, have three of the members, so we have actually the majority of the members on the commission. So, I've, I've heard a lot of the arguments for and against and, and I agree. This is a project that has to go forward. I was thinking about it so much this weekend that I went ahead and drove up the South Fork and saw those big, beautiful bridges that are up there. And I know the geology may be different, but I don't remember anyone arguing about those bridges. And I don't know, again, there, there may be reasons for that, but there's, there's more traffic, much, much, exponentially more traffic on 199, so it's something that has to happen. I also had a constituent ask me, what, what happens if that, that ancient bridge falls down? What happens to the sediment then? You know, it's, it's going to be a real problem for us. So, I think we, I think we've set our piece here and I would entertain a motion.
I would be happy to make a motion to consider for adoption Resolution 2014-32, a resolution of the city of Crescent City again endorsing the Safe Surface Transportation Assistance Act access on California State Route 197 and US Highway 199 from Highway 101 to Interstate 5.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2014-32. Any other discussion? Very good. Would you please pull the vote on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalhoun?
Yes.
And Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's, it's always good to have a little backup when we're up here making tough decisions, so, not that this one was tough, but.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, reports and presentations, we have none. Under communication, this is our time for our regular public comment period. So, any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the podium or the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and your city or county residency for the record. And again, public comment is limited to three minutes. So, we have, any public comment, any general public comment for us today? Please, we're recording this, so we have to do.
My name is Susan Moore. I am co-owner and CEO of the Crescent City Art Institute and Gallery. We purchased a building that was the West Coast Crab Packing Company back in the year 2009.
You, you saw the whisper here. We were just mentioning that your, your item is on the agenda as well.
Is it on the agenda as well?
Yes.
I wasn't sure when to come and approach you.
You actually have an agenda item, so you'll have more than your three minutes to, to talk to us.
Oh, so should I go ahead and sit back down?
It might be best and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
That's great. Thank you. And I have to go and ask Eric a question.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll see you in a few minutes. So, any other public comment generally? Thank you, Kelly. Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, Mike Sullivan, County Board of Supervisors and it hasn't, we as a board haven't been approached, but I can tell you the general consensus and I'm going to speak because I've got another thing I have to get to shortly after this, but item 10 on your agenda for the Veterans Monument, it's a long time coming. We definitely, and I know the council probably feels the same way that, as I do and I'm sure that most of our board does too, that it's a necessary thing to, to support and, and honor our veterans. So, I would encourage you to pass it and get the thing up and going. So, I know it's been a long time coming and it'd be nice to be able to get things through government a lot quicker, but sometimes we run into obstacles. So, I would encourage you to vote for it this evening and, and let's get this thing up, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any other public comments? Any other public comment, just generally, on anything on or off the agenda? Okay, seeing none then. We'll go ahead and move on. What we're going to do at this point is adjourn the regular meeting of the city council and we'll adjourn and go to the Crescent City Housing Authority. So let me get to that if I could. Okay, under the Crescent City Housing Authority, I will call the meeting to order for the Crescent City Housing Authority. I think we can dispense with the roll call, the same people are here that were here at the beginning of the meeting. This is again, a public comment period for the Crescent City Housing Authority. Any member of the audience is invited to address the housing authority on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent, Crescent City Housing Authority. Comments of public interest or on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the agenda agency is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and residency for the record. And you, again, you're limited to three minutes. Any public comment period on items regarding the Crescent City Housing Authority? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar has two items, approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 21, 2014, and approval of the warrant claims from July 22, 2014 to August 18, 2014. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda for this, the consent calendar? Very good.
I will move to approve Items 1 and 2.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as a whole. I think since we're dealing with warrant claims, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We have none of the following items, the housing director's report, business items, public hearing, continuing business, new business. So we will adjourn this meeting of the Crescent City Housing Authority and the next regularly scheduled meeting will be held September 15, 2014. So we are adjourning the Crescent City Housing Authority meeting and we're going to the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. So I will call this meeting to order of the, I wish there was a quicker title, the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. We'll go ahead and call that to order and I think we can again, dispense with the roll call. Please note that all of us are here. And the public comment period, I'll say this very quickly, just for the record. Any member of the audience is invited to address the successor agency to the redevelopment agency on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the Crescent City Successor Agency to the redevelopment agency. Comments of public interest or on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the agency is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name for the record. So is there any public comment on this successor agency to the redevelopment agency?
C.C.
What is it?
C.C. Sarah.
C.C. Sarah. Okay. I see none? So we'll bring it back. That's kind of fun to say. We'll bring it back to the consent calendar.
I move for approval of Items 1 and 2 on the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and approved. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? And those items regard minutes and warrant claims? Any public discussion? Okay, we'll bring it back and would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So we will now adjourn the, I'm not going to say what you said, the successor agency to the redevelopment agency and will return to our regular city council meeting. This is the time in which we have the public hearings. We will hold a public hearing to consider expenditure of program income funding and request to HCD for program income waivers. Consider for adoption Resolution Number 2014-33, a resolution of the city council of the City of Crescent City authorizing the reuse of community development block grant program income contingent on the granting of the State Department of Housing and Community Development, CDBG supplemental activity request and direct staff to solicit bids. So that's before us. Mr. Palazzo?
Mayor, Ms. Boyd will present this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This feels a little bit like deja vu, I'm sure, to you. It does that way to us as well. In June, we came to you with a proposal for the expenditure of the program income funds. At that time, we were talking about, excuse me, facility rehabilitation at the swimming pool and also some equipment purchases for the housing authority. We were led to believe at the time that those two items would likely get approved by HCD, but once our application got in and went above the rep level to the upper management at HCD, they disallowed the housing equipment project. So we've come back to you now with a proposal to expand the swimming pool project for some needed equipment and installation, energy efficiency projects down there at the pool that are desperately needed. We're asking you to do this because we have a timeframe happening on these funds. We need to expend them by December 31 of this year, or we're in danger of losing those funds. The expanded pool project includes energy efficiency, as I said, and facility accessibility items, LED lighting, pool vacuum, water treadmill, changing table, water heater for therapy pool, ADA lift, and a bike. And so tonight, what we're asking you to do is rescind Resolution 2014-24 from June 16 and adopt Resolution 2014-33 from tonight, and also to direct staff to go ahead and solicit bids for this project.
Okay. Thank you. Any technical questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for public comment on this matter. Any public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council then. Mr. Ania?
I'd make a motion to rescind Resolution 2014-22, or 24, and adopt Resolution 2014-33.
Mayor, can you officially close the public hearing? Thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing at this point. Thank you. And thank you. Everyone understand Mr. Ania's?
Yes, and I will second his motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I would like to say, just for the record, I'm sorry for the housing agency's inability to get the software and the things that you were looking for, but at least this is a good option, I think, so...
And I just wanted to just confirm from staff that you feel that this entire project can get done within the allotted timeline?
We do. It's going to be tight. And that's why we would like the council to direct us to solicit bids, you know, now. We'll submit our paperwork to HCD, get the approval, and hopefully, once we get the approval, we can go right into, you know, construction of the roof and the accessibility project. One of the reasons why we were focusing on the equipment, it's a little easier, you know, to purchase and, you know, get completed within the allotted time that we have. So we're hopeful.
Okay.
And we're going to move forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion of this matter? Yes?
I'm really sorry about the housing authority, too. We really needed that software and it's really too bad, so, yeah.
We'll work on finding them.
Yep. So again, we've had a motion and a second to rescind Resolution 2014-24, I think, and to adopt Resolution 2014-33 and to direct staff to solicit bids for the project. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So the next matter is under continuing business. Consideration and approval allocating additional lands for the Veterans Monument as required by the project's use permit and provide policy direction in regard to the maintenance agreement. This is Number 10. And Mr. Palazzo?
Mayor, Mr. Taylor will present this item.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. So you're all probably very familiar with this project. It's been going on for several years now, coming back to the council again. Just to recap, back in September of 2009, the committee came before the planning commission for the original use permit for the area to construct the monument itself. After those approvals, and then they came before the city council for approval to use that land, at that point, everybody's familiar that that property is actually within the permitting jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. So therefore, we don't issue that coastal development permit. They have to go to the California Coastal Commission to get that coastal development permit. So in the past few years, several years, they've been working on that process. As far as they kind of went to the commission, and one of the conditions of approval that came back from the commission was for a landscaping plan. It's really associated with the lighting analysis that they conducted, really looking at the impact of the lighting from the monument on Elk Creek and the estuary. And so what came back from coastal, that kind of planned to plant, I believe it was probably six, six plus 15-inch diameter trees, that's 15-inch trunk diameters, which they're dolled, they're big trees. So we had several issues with that, being in the location that they wanted them. And the idea was that that would screen the lighting. And I think one of their concerns is the uplighting reflecting off of the fog and making its way back to the creek itself. We had some concerns due to the location, one, the size of the trees, the type of trees, or location to the Harbor Trail, the impact of tree roots on the trail itself, also the impact, the city has a main sewer line that runs right through there. So then it would have been come necessary for them to plant large steel plates underground to protect our facilities. So you looked at it, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense. We kind of met on site down there with the project proponents and coastal, and we were kind of asked, you know, what if we just increased the native vegetation that's down there to help diffuse the light and reduce the impact? So they said that it was now the question that could go back with that proposal. With that, I have a brief presentation. There we go. So here, the project proponents came back to the planning commission. It was necessary to come back because the initial use permit didn't include the extra land for the landscaping plan, because it was just unknown at that time. So they need to come back to amend the use permit that was already issued to include the, one, the landscaping plan and the use of the additional land. And so here's, this is the proposed plan. And as you can see, as you can see up front there, you can see the monument itself, and that's the area that was already approved under the original use permit. And then the landscaping plan behind it there. And most of it includes planting additional willows and planting some, maybe some additional coastal pines, some of the vegetation that's already there. And so this, the area that was designated, that we looked at and was approved by the planning commission and recommended to come to the council for approval. I'm trying to see. I can't get the arrow to come up here. Let's move along through here. And you can see up front there, in the grassy area up there by the S curve is where the monument itself would be. So this is looking south from Front Street, back at the point of our location and the property behind it. So you can see what they're talking about is you have these, this uplighting, and I guess the impact that it might reflect off the fog and hit back. So if you can see, right now, you can kind of see through there, we maintain that very well for reasons, you know, keep folks out of that area. You can actually see the RV park in the background, so there would be some additional vegetation back there to lessen the impact. And the idea, that also was another concern we had at the time, is if we plant this row of trees, is it just going to create some type of a screening, you know, for other activities that we don't want going on down there? So we wanted also maintain the ability to go in there and keep this area semi-clear. There's another shot, looking from the Harbor Trail there, and that's looking kind of to the east. And that's in that impacted area, we're looking at planting. And you can see there's already some existing willow there and some coast pines. But if you look at that, kind of that grassy area there that's to the south of the trail, that's kind of the area where they were proposing to plant those evergreen trees. So you can see the location to the trail itself, and then our sewer line actually runs right along there. Again, just more of a close-up. So you can see kind of the distance there, and you can see that kind of riparian corridor in the background there, where the creek channel is. And again, that's kind of the area where they were really proposing to plant a lot of those trees. It actually extended that far to the west. And the idea for us, too, is we also kind of want to try to maintain as much of that few quarters as we can. So planting 30-foot trees in there is just not really conducive for that. So really, we have two parts that we're here tonight also. The second part of this, so the planning commission for the conditions of approval, one, they need to come back to the council for approval to use that land. And two, the other condition was a maintenance plan. This is something that's come up in the past, the city obviously has concerns about making sure that monument's maintained. Obviously, the city has limited resources, so we're kind of hesitant to take on new items, so we just, we can't maintain ourselves. So part of it is to come up with a maintenance plan, so we're asking also that the council direct staff to draft a formal maintenance agreement. And I think it's important to note here, you have kind of two entities. There's the monument committee, which is a smaller committee, folks that are coming forward with the monument plan. But once the monument is actually built, then they'll turn over the maintenance to the monument council, which is kind of the larger veterans, city and county group. And if you look at the, they submitted a letter, a proposal for the maintenance plan. One of the things that they're proposing is they will have a, have a bank account set aside for maintenance. One of the conditions that's been looked at by the public works director, and that they propose themselves, because they're looking at what the annual cost would be, around $5,000 a year. So they propose to have a bank account with about $75,000 in funding in it, and which they'll draw down about 4.5% per year to cover maintenance costs. Now, so one of the conditions that was put on this as well is that that would be in place prior to the commencement of any construction. So I just want to make it clear that what we're asking tonight is that the council approve the use of the land, and the use of that land is based on the landscaping plan that was submitted to the planning commission. If, that still has to go back to the California Coastal Commission for their approval. If that's changed, changes, or is altered, it'll have to come back again to the planning commission for approval. And two, it is to direct staff to come up with this maintenance agreement for long-term maintenance of the monument itself. And I also want to make it clear that we are not issuing the coastal development permit, that the committee still needs to go back to the California Coastal Commission to get their final coastal development permit. And one other condition that we're asking for, that staff thought it was prudent, is to have a two-year review for this project. As you know, use permits run with the land, they run concurrent with the land. So coastal development permits are also good for two years, and after two years, you go back and ask for an extension, so they'll continue to give you those two-year extensions. We just thought it was a good idea to review this project as well every two years, just to get a review of the project, you know, to get an update of how it's coming along. And in the case of, for some reason, the project's not moving forward, the city should be informed of that as well, so we can unencumber the property if that's the case at some That is my presentation. I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Questions?
I just had a couple. So the maintenance part of the budget, the $3,600 or $300 a month, is that something that they're planning to pay the city to maintain, or is that something they're paying a private contractor to maintain?
Well, if you look at their plan, we try to make that clear that they, really, if we don't, the city does not want to have to take on any maintenance of the Veterans Monument. So that's actually to pay for their materials and cover their costs. As they've indicated, they have, you know, veterans, the group itself would have volunteers. They've stated many other organizations in here that have volunteered to step forward. But in the case that, you know, something happens or it's degraded and it's not being maintained to the city's standards, or you say there's graffiti and trash, we, there will be written somehow, there will be language in the agreement stating that the city will have the ability to bill them for any maintenance that we have to perform.
I'd prefer that we not say we don't want to help maintain. We may not be able to afford it, but, you know, it'd be great if we could afford to help take care of it. So, because I think it's, I think it's going to be a great thing. The other question I had was, you said that the coastal development permit can be extended after two years, and are you talking about the actual construction permit?
Correct. That's what their coastal development permit allows them to construct that monument.
Okay. And so you wanted to be able to have the city review it as well? And so you wanted to be able to have the city review it as well, after two years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
So I have a few questions. So do they have an idea of how much this landscaping plan will cost? I didn't see that exactly.
The cost for the landscaping? I guess, I really refer, they have some representatives here. They give you a firmer idea on that. I don't want to give you any misinformation.
Okay. And I walk around over there all the time, and I still think that this is kind of a small area for a memorial, and so there's no way that they would want to move it to someplace else, because it just doesn't seem like a place where you could gather and have any kind of a really memorial area for people to gather around. I wasn't here when the man with the tractor came, I was at my family reunion, so I don't know how well that went off, but it just, it just seems like you can't really gather around right there for a group to have a memorial service. So I'm wondering why they're so adamant to have it right there. It just seems really an awkward place, noisy for one, and too small, and not really safe for people to be right on where the freeway is, so.
I can't answer that for them. But I do believe, and I might be off here, it's been a while, but I believe initially the coastal commission, one of the requirements was they wanted some type of a plan of action if there were going to be memorials or events at this location, and I believe their response back was that they weren't going to have those events there. But it's been a while, so it may be a little fuzzy on that. But I mean, I can't answer the reasoning, I mean.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
It was my understanding it was more of a memorial to honor the veterans, not where they would have memorials for the veterans. That would probably still take place at the veterans cemetery.
So with that, I think I'll open this up for public comment, and we may get some of those questions answered. Anyone have public comment on this matter, Veterans Memorial?
Good evening. My name's Harlan Ziegler, I'm with the Veterans Monument Committee. One thing I'd like to address, I noticed in the amendment that they've got the, and in the staff recommendations, they've got the monument as an 80-foot diameter plaza. Well, it was changed to 60-foot back in September of 2009, so it's been, it's been a while. So they're carrying that a little bit wrong. They used, we had two separate photometric studies done, and that's a fancy word for lighting, on two different occasions, and they both came back that there was little or almost nil light hitting Elk Creek. But still, the coastal commission required that there be exactly nothing, and that's close to what it was. So as Eric stated, this is really the best of the options that we had, and that land that they're talking about planting those willows and those natural beech pines in is virtually worthless, you can't really do nothing with it anyhow in kind of the proximity to Elk Creek. And it's not going to, if that satisfies coastal commission, well, then I'm, I'm good with it, and I think the city is too on that front, so. Other than that, that's about all I wanted to comment. I'm sure some of the others would like to take a comment, but we'd like to say that this monument, it is a monument, not a memorial, started back in October of 2007 with a city staff meeting. And in November of 2007, it started with this very body. So we've came a long ways, it's been a long haul, and now we can see the end of it, I think, so hopefully we'll be able to get the funding and get this thing through, so. Thank you. I recommend that you pass these proposals this evening, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
May I ask, do we have any sense about what building a monument like this costs? Is that a fair question at this point?
We, I'm over my three minutes, I can't do this.
Well, I'll give you another 10 seconds.
We really don't. That's our next stage. We've had a, we've had a, a price put on it by the Delmore Builders Association again, but that's been several years back, and I believe that was about 400, I want to say 50,000, 430,000. But that was at the high end at that time, they did it deliberately high. So now, we're just going to have to see, we're going to have to put a bid package together and see where we're at with this thing, so, okay?
Thank you for speaking. Other public comments on this matter?
Say, you better, you better come up to that podium, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, council and staff, Charles Surt from Fortuna, project architect. And to be clear, it is a monument versus a memorial. It was actually created and designed for more of a personal experience as compared to a mass group kind of experience. Your staff has recommended approval, we concur with that. There's a couple items, as Eric mentioned, the maintenance agreement and the associated budget. We did a pass at the budget a couple years ago, and the plan had not been fully developed. Now it's been fully developed, so we've gone back, finalized the landscape plan, and the associated maintenance agreement and cost estimate to go with it. Something that we are concerned about is, one of the issues that has been raised is the addition of another 4,000 square feet to a 5,000 square foot plus or minus project, which is virtually doubling the size of it in concept or on paper. There was a aerial photograph shown earlier with a large triangle on it. And so, as the veterans committee, we're curious about how that 4,000 plus or minus square foot assessment was made, because you can see the majority of the trees are already there. And actually, I think this is an old aerial photograph, and doesn't reflect the current conditions that has a substantial number of trees that have grown to the west of the blue line on the west side. So when we met at the site with the city staff and the coastal staff, the interest was to infill where there's a gaping hole, if you will, in the existing natural environment. And if you could possibly go back to the landscape plan, the new 16 trees are identified with a crosshatching, so they look gray. And you can see there's a field of trees completely surrounding. So that's a more accurate assessment of what's actually out there on the site. So the question is, the triangle actually that's represented in the photograph is virtually missing the 16 trees that have been added. So why is the 4,000 square feet being assessed to the project when it's part of the state 176 acres, and the city maintains that area currently and will maintain it in the future? The veterans are proposing to purchase the trees and then to plant the trees, then after that, the city would maintain that area with the other trees that they currently maintain. So we're not sure why that 4,000 square feet is being proposed to be added, or added to the veterans' point of honor monument site. In general, the point of honor is going to be a major unification project for the city, and I think everybody will benefit from the project. And the key is that there's no cost to the city. The veterans are covering all the costs. We don't have a cost for the landscaping yet, because it hasn't been bid, but it's fairly substantial, because all of the trees are what they call specimen or major mature trees. So they can start like a 48-inch box, and they can start it several hundred dollars apiece. So the marketplace and the economy will determine what the actual cost for the landscaping is, but everything is specified in the landscape plan, including the maintenance conditions associated with that plan. So I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Kelly?
Welcome. It's good to see you. So I just wanted to, I know that you and I mentioned, talked about this before, but reaching out to Pacific Power and their grant application for projects such as this, but they also provide trees, and I don't know if that had been part of your plan yet.
They actually have been approached. And the most recent was that they weren't participating in that program anymore, but we would be happy to revisit that. We're also going to be approaching people within the community regarding participation, donations, contributions to the project, whether it's in materials, labor, or landscape.
Absolutely.
Charles, I was thinking, you know, going and seeing the person on the tractor last week, you might have missed him, for the veterans, Home Depot sponsored that. I wonder if they will donate those trees, because all veterans are heroes. And there's something for the local Home Depot to do here.
Yeah, it's definitely part of their mission.
That's their mission, and they brought the guy all the way across the United States.
Well, and part of our mission, that's great. Part of our mission is to be inclusive in the entire community. And part of the problem is, we haven't been able to go out and really approach people because we have to secure the plan first, before we can go for the application for the funding, and then for the sponsorship or participation.
So I'm a little confused now why you're asking, why we're considering the additional triangle. I thought it was required so that you could do the additional landscaping.
Well, that's fine, but that's not the area where the landscaping is occurring. I actually have a colored plan here that shows, I think, in more clarity.
Is that the coastal commission, Eric?
Right, so we try to encompass a larger area, and we can expand it, because I don't know, the unknown here is still what coastal is going to approve, so we want to give you, rather than us have to keep coming back and asking for additional changing, and again, I mean, it makes sense just to, you know, a little bit larger area.
I guess the point that I would make is that this shows the triangle that's represented, and then you see the colored trees with the shadow, and they're, all but two of them are falling outside of that triangle. So the triangle is not the area where the improvements are occurring.
So maybe Eric can work with you.
Yeah, we can amend that, add a larger area on there.
Right.
Great, thank you. And I know that you've been working on this for many, many years, and I know that a lot of people really appreciate it.
Thank you.
As I understand it, Mr. Surt, hello again, I haven't seen you in a long time. You were the designer of this particular monument? Okay.
It's a love affair.
Okay, apparently. Thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments on this? Okay, seeing no other public comments, we'll go ahead and bring this back to the council itself.
I have a comment, okay?
Yes, sir.
Eric, could you go back to that photograph that shows the clearance, that you can see the trailer park? Right, right there. Or maybe the one before that. Right, that one. Now, you see the clearance there that you can see through those trees? I think it was a year and a half or two years ago, we were having all kinds of problems with transients, and also people that were jumping in front of people walking on that walkway, and it was not very safe at all. So we cleared that, we cleared that rush from under there, the city did that. We cleared that for safety. And then we had an individual that she called the coastal commission to report us. And we told the coastal commission that we're doing that for public safety, and it cleaned it up 100%. Now it seems they want to cover what we did, even though they're tree trunks. I would never be in favor eventually if that gets cleared or covered so much that we're going to have those problems again. And I think we need to bring that to the coastal commission's attention. We haven't had any incidents since then that I have ever heard about. But that's the reason why you clear that, because we don't want incidents like that. And so it's a safety concern for me, but I think the coastal commission ought to know that.
Actually, when we met-
In fact, they do know it, because that individual told them about it, would stop this stuff for a long time, and I'm very much aware of it.
Mr. Taylor, did you have a response?
No, they're aware of it. I mean, we've worked with them on clearing it in the past, so we let them know what the issues were. And we also, when we met on site with them, we kind of reaffirmed that.
But they still want the coverage.
Like I said, it's a little bit of an unknown right now, until they actually go back and speak with them.
Thank you. Okay, other comments, questions, concerns by the council?
I would move to approve allocating additional lands for the veterans' monument as required by the project's use permit, and provide policy direction in regards to the maintenance agreement, and to direct staff to work with the committee on the actual coverage area for the new landscaping.
I'll second that.
I just want a clarification, so the coastal commission wants us to do this too, Eric?
Since the coastal commission's making this a requirement, like I mentioned earlier, their initial, the original use permit didn't even consider using any property on the other side of the trail at that time. So in order to stay consistent with our local process and our use permit, because our municipal code requires anything in the parks, requires a use permit, any type of development, so we had, that's why we came back to amend that, to include that area. So right now, like I said, I want to make it clear that this really isn't related to the coastal, issuing of a coastal development permit, it's more of our local use permit process.
Okay, but it still has to go back to coastal?
Correct.
Okay.
So are there any other questions about the motion? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes. Okay, thank you, and thank you all for being here. Appreciate that tonight. So the next matter before us is under continuing business.
Say hello to Patricia.
Under continuing business is the Shoreline RV Park Reconstruction Project. Declare the McLennan Excavation Inc. bid non-responsive, reject all bids, approve the amended plans and specifications, and authorize staff to re-advertise for bids with suggested modifications. Number 11. Mr. Palazzo, would you like to summarize this, or?
Mr. Taylor doing this?
Mr. Taylor?
This one?
I am.
Very good.
That's why I'm sitting here. As you recall, back in June 16th, we came, staff came forward to the council to ask approval to take the plans forward and put this project out to bid for the Shoreline RV Park Reconstruction. We did so. We received bids on July 25th upon bid openings. We found that two of the bidders were actually over budget, and the one bidder who actually was within budget did not have a valid contractor's license at the time of bidding. So therefore, pursuant to Business and Professions Code 7028.15 parentheses E, which in short states that you have to be a licensed contractor to bid on a project, we need to declare that that bid is non-responsive. And again, we're asking to reject all remaining bids, it's the simple fact that they're over budget. And then three, we'll be asking to approve the amended plans and specifications, and authorize staff to re-advertise for bids with suggested modifications. So if you'll recall, keep in line with the EDA requirements requires that we, the way we present the bid is having these deducts, so which means you have your base bid, which is the entire project, and then you kind of subtract, you get down to a sm-. is the entire project, and then you kind of subtract as you get down to a smaller project. And the first round, the way we had constructed the bid documents was, we had the four deducts. We had A was the base bid, which was the entire project, deduct. B was minus paving all of the sites. And then we got down to C, which is minus paving the roads and the sites. And then as we got down, further down, it was eliminating actual RV sites altogether. So kind of reflecting on that, we decided that wasn't probably the best plan of action. So what we've done is we've kind of reconfigured it. Now the deducts include, you know, you have your base bid, it's minus paving the sites, minus paving the roads. And then the last deduct, C, is minus the valley gutters, which also requires paving, which is a gutter that would go down the center of the roads, which would catch all the drainage and take it away that way. So reconfiguring it this way takes out, eliminates the option to eliminate any sites, which is better for us, for the city, because even if we get down to that last deduct, at least that includes redoing, you know, regrading the park, redoing all the roads, putting in all the new utilities, you know, putting in all the new sites. So worst case scenario, we're able to get the park up and running again. And that's really what we were shooting for at this point. We want to make sure within that three to four months, we can have that done, be open for business again, keep the park running, bring in, keep the revenues coming in. And so what, the way it's constructed is we'll use this, these bid documents to determine the lowest bidder. So whoever, we've set the million dollars for the project amount. Whoever comes in with the best project, as close to that million dollars as possible, will be determined the lowest bidder. And depending how far down we get, we can, you know, we may come back to the, we'll definitely be back to the council. Let me run through the new schedule, actually, we proposed. So of course, tonight is the eighteenth, assuming the city council authorizes rebidding this project. We'll do the publication on eight twenty-one. The new bid opening date would be nine five. We actually made a determination, Mr. Weir's more familiar with this process than I am, but we actually only have to put it out for bid for two weeks rather than the full month that we did the first time, which is good for us because we're on a pretty tight schedule, obviously with the weather looming and all that. Then we would come back to council on the fifteenth and hopefully we'd be able to issue a notice to proceed October third to mid-October, the latest probably on that. That's my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I'll entertain any questions.
Will those bids include a timeline for construction?
Correct. It does have a construction deadline.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Taylor?
I just absolutely astonished that someone would put in a bid without a contractor's license.
Yeah, I mean, it was, to be fair, I mean, it was an insurance issue, so they just didn't get their paperwork, didn't get through on time.
Okay.
We're hopeful that they'll rebid. Everybody's welcome to come rebid this project again and we hope they will.
Okay, thank you. So is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council.
Well, it's disappointing that we're not getting ready to start the project, but I will make a motion to declare the McLennan Excavation Incorporated bid non-responsive, to reject all bids and to approve the amended plans and specs, authorizing staff to re-advertise for bids with suggested modifications.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, please pull the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Under new business, number twelve, to consider and approve the sale of approximately three thousand two hundred square feet of city property, APN one eighteen dash zero five zero dash eleven, to Dane and Susan Moore. Approve sale terms and authorize the city manager to complete the transaction. Mr. Palazzo?
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Taylor will present this item as well.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Give me a brief moment here to get this, I have a brief PowerPoint. This is in power save mode. There we go. So as you recall, last year or this year, we received a land donation from the Soss family, known as APN one one eight zero five zero eleven. This is the property that's between Second and Front Street, close to D Street. It's right next to the Alexander Derrys Building. You're all familiar with that, which is located adjacent to Renner's Building. And here's the actual aerial photograph. And yes, our aerial photographs are a little old, but we used the ones that the city had flown over in two thousand and four because they have the best resolution. So hopefully sometime we'll be able to upgrade those. So it's existing property. So the property boundary in red is the city parcel, zero five zero eleven, and outlined in blue is the property currently owned by Dane and Susan Moore. And what really stands out, which is apparent right up front, is you can see that a portion of that building actually crosses the property line and is actually located on city's property. So the Moores are in the process of redeveloping their property. Pictures here, as you can actually see there, they've made some significant improvements to the property, all new siding, windows, new electrical panel there. So it's quite the undertaking, actually, to bring that property back. And what's great for the city, you know, we like to see these buildings rehabilitated. We get new businesses in them. That's even better. It's better for everybody. It's, in the long run, the city benefits from improved property tax values and, you know, on and on. So those pictures taken from Front, Second Street, that's looking south towards Second Street. And you can see the additions, that little portion sticking off there that kind of covered access. Again, here's, this is looking to the east and this is from the city's property. So again, this is looking, this would be looking from Front Street back towards Second Street. You'd be looking at the south side of the building.
Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
And then this is looking back towards Renner's. This is actually the same, that same location, that south side of the building. And so this is the area that they're proposing to get an additional ten feet. So last slide here shows the proposed property. So the big, one of the biggest concerns, obviously, for us is we'd like to get this, get the building up, running condition, try to attract new business in there, eliminate the issue that started as a code enforcement case several years ago. We'd like, they're desirous to rehabilitate that building, so we'd like to see that happen rather than us having to go through the process of tearing down that portion that's on our property, on city property. So therefore, they proposed, well, what they're asking for is this ten-foot little strip of land around the actual structure. Really has to do a lot with fire code and being able to put windows in the building. And so we, city's proposed that we give them the ten-feet strip of land off the south side of the building, measured ten feet off the addition to the west and then runs all the way, the distance down to the property line and back. So I've included all the lineal footage of those lines. In total, it's approximately thirty-two hundred square feet. As you recall, when we had the land donation, we actually had an appraisal done on the property. That appraisal came back, I think, a total value of two hundred thousand dollars. The way it broke down was about eight dollars a square foot, which is probably a little high for a commercial property in this part of town. But looking at some comparables and recent properties I've sold, Big Five Property being the most recent, we proposed really more in line of a sale price of four dollars a square foot for this property. You know, in the past, as we sell public lands, we usually have to go through, the government code requires you put it out for sale for public agencies. I think we made the determinations into this is such a small portion of property and it's really not usable to anybody else for development. We're asking just to go through with the sale of this property. So going to the terms of sale, again, the purchase price would be four dollars a square foot. Now this is taken off of our aerial photographs, so an actual land survey of the property will be more accurate accounting. So the square footage may go up, it may go down, depending on the actual determination where the property corners are. We're proposing that land survey and preparation of the tentative map, the Moores will be responsible for securing a land survey and the preparation of the tentative map. Estimates anywhere probably from twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred dollars for the cost on that. The lot line adjustment, the city typically charges a four hundred and fifty dollar fee for that. We're proposing that the city absorb that fee, basically in staff time to process the tentative map and approval of the sale. And the recordation of the deed, speaking with the title company, has probably, since we're just doing it straight, we're not doing any title search or anything of that manner, it's probably about fifty dollars to record.
Okay, questions of Mr. Taylor? Did, I'm sorry, were you completed?
No, I'm finished. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I just, based on your comment, have we determined the legal requirements have been met for selling the property without going out to?
Yes, early on, when this first came up a while back, we looked at whether we were required, you know, if we could just enter into this transaction or not. And like Eric said, because it's not, it's, this property is not usable by anybody else because it's so small, the amount that we're proposing to sell, we can just directly negotiate with the purchasers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murray, did you have a question?
We have taken the past five years and, and trying to get this property. We were working with Mr. Soss and just going back and forth with him continually, trying to achieve a goal of purchasing specific property that had been used with this building for over the past seventy years. When the, when the abatements were notified, he called me up and he said he had had it. And the next thing I knew, he was giving the land to the city instead of selling it to us, which would have made him a great profit. At that point, we contacted Eric and Mr. Palazzo. And thank you, gentlemen, for working so diligently on our behalf. We do appreciate it. At this point, we are, we have done our homework, our Crescent City Art Institute, as far as the industry analysis and trends, the amount spent in the arts and culture during two thousand and eleven was one thousand three hundred point four billion, or one point four three percent of all personal consumption expenditures. National Art Index of two thousand and thirteen, with a national population of three fourteen, three hundred and fourteen million, this equals four hundred and eighty-eight dollars per year, each per person each year, which equals thirteen point nine million spent annually in Delmar County alone. We feel that offering a place where people can come, walk in, take an art class from an educated teacher. We will be hiring on our teachers at an hourly rate. We will be advertising with an international magazine to pull in artists from around the world to come in and hold workshops. And we will also have the accommodations of a apartment on the second floor to accommodate these artists. It will bring revenue, tourism, and a heightened awareness of the arts and culture that we do have here in Delmar County. And we hope that it will be a good marriage. And we have discussed it with Mr. Palazzo, as well as Eric Taylor, that in the future, if indeed we are successful, that they would consider possibly, considering selling us another piece of the property towards Front Street so that we might expand our classrooms to include large wood art sculptures, metalwork, as well as a recology department where we would take reclaimed items and turn them into art. I've already been in touch with Ted Ward on this subject and I appreciate everything that is being done for us here. I did want to ask if it would possibly be considered that the city share the cost of the three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars for the survey. Because we are not a large conglomerate, we do not have deep pockets. This is my husband and myself financing everything. And we would really appreciate the assistance. And thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your patience. I appreciate it.
Can you come back? First you come in to go away, then you come in to come back. Yes.
So this is really exciting. I read your little handout.
Thank you, yes.
So I'm really excited. I was wondering, we have a lot of great local artists here.
Absolutely.
And I was wondering if you'd met Barbara Berg, who owns-
Oh, yes.
She's a good friend of mine.
Yes, I do know Barbara Berg. And I was just talking to Holly this morning of Danaca. I was asked to possibly judge some art competitions. I am a fifth-generation artist. You would recognize my great-grandfather for the backdrops in The Wizard of Oz and the set scenes.
Oh, okay.
His father was Alfred Warsley Holdstock, who was a famous Canadian artist who still has his work in the Montreal museums. I'm number five.
So we have a lot of really talented local artists here, so.
And instead of asking them to contribute time and volunteer, I will be paying them.
Great. Good, okay.
We also are hoping for a culinary kitchen.
Oh, that's really-
So we have people that are very interested, that have restaurants, that are interested in coming and actually teaching culinary classes, everywhere from San Francisco, Healsburg, Santa Rosa, and Sacramento. We also have a nutritionalist waiting to go to work. She would like to come and teach a class on how people with limited incomes can make terrific and nutritional meals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's good to hear that.
Any other question?
Did you have a question?
I just wanted to ask you about your timeline.
My time, we're hoping to open by this time next year.
Okay, awesome.
Hope, hopeful hopes, you know, doing the best we can.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Well, we also wanted to mention that we are doing a green build. We are restoring just the exact building. And we have an architect out of Carmichael that is doing the work for us, for the design work.
Thank you. I know all of us have seen the changes that have happened in that old building and we do appreciate it.
It had been empty for a while when we received it and, you know, I pat it every so often and say, that's okay, we're gonna get it. It'll be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're done.
Okay. I think so. We'll call you. You could do it from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess any other public comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the city council. Any input?
Well, my initial thought is regarding her request regarding sharing the cost of the survey is that the city is already reducing the price of the, of the property by fifty percent of what it was appraised at. And then also, we're waiving the fees to the city as well. So I'm willing to hear what the rest of the council has to say about that. But I'm really excited about this. I'm hop, was hoping maybe you'd kind of take over Front Street.
I, I agree with Councilmember Shalom about, about the financial, but I am hoping, I am open in the future to looking at somewhere, if you're successful and want to do that after you open, I'm, I'm open to looking at selling you more property. Not that we're in the real estate business, but-
Absolutely.
It's always nice to see a business that's growing and that'd be great.
And I, I'd like to say, I just, I can't see that we can share in some of those, those final costs. There's a kind of a fine line where we have to worry about gifts of public funds and I think we're probably at that line at this point. So I don't think I'd be in favor of that. So, okay, so I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval. I'll move for approval of the sale of approximately thirty, of three thousand two hundred square feet of city property, APN number one one eight dash zero five zero dash eleven, to Dane and Susan Moore and approve the sale terms and authorize the city manager to complete the transaction.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to, to approve the sale and authorize the city manager to complete the transaction. Any other comments or questions? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, thank you. And congratulations again. That's great. Okay, so we're moving on to number thirteen under new business. Consider adoption of Resolution twenty fourteen dash thirty-five, a resolution of the city council of Crescent City- 2014-35, a resolution of the city council of Crescent City implementing Phase Three of the North Coast Integrated Regional Manage, Water Management Plan. So, Mr. Palazzo. Mayor, introduce Mr. Weir to present this item.
Thank you, good evening Mayor, members of the council. So yes, what we're talking about this evening is the Phase Three of the North Coast Erwin, as they call it, the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. The North Coast Erwin represents seven counties, it's Delmar, Humboldt, Mendocino, Sonoma, I believe Modock counties, and what the state has done for about the last 12 years is rather than initiate a statewide measure in which there's competitive applications for water and wastewater projects throughout the state, and each individual city, county, agency has to then apply for them and look at them, they've broken it into regions, and it's actually worked out quite well, because each region, especially when it comes to water and wastewater, has unique needs and priorities. So the North Coast is no different, so that's how they've utilized the funding, and like you say, it's, it's worked out, worked out well for the city of Crescent City as well as the North Coast. We've completed several projects with the, with cooperation within the Erwin, Prop 50 monies that was allocated to the treatment plant for 910,000 was an Erwin project, we have completed an energy efficiency project at the Rainy Collector years ago, in which we installed variable frequency drives, that was again, was an Erwin-type project. We've recently applied for Prop 84, the drought funding project for the elevated tank, and feel very strongly that we, we will get funded with, with that amount of money, and that's again, an Erwin project. So this is the, the Phase Three plan, and what it is, is it's designed to be basically a voluntary, non-regulatory, stakeholder-driven planning framework meant to emphasize shared priorities and local autonomy, authority, knowledge, and approaches to achieving tribal, state, regional, and local priorities related to the North Coast water infrastructure, watersheds, public health, and economic vitality. Those are the goals, you know, and it's just, it's a planning document that, that tries to, tries to put some sort of a framework around those goals, so by adopting it, it allows the city to be eligible for Erwin money, as future money is available.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Weir? Okay, any public comment on this matter regarding the resolution implementing Phase Three of the North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management Plan? Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2014-35, implementing Phase Three of the North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management Plan.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, okay, again, thank you. Number 14, we're to receive monthly budget to actual financial report of the city's major operating funds and take action as necessary and appropriate. And Ms. Boyd will present this item. Ms. Boyd.
Is that all you do, just introduce people?
Yeah, you know. Yes, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Emily Boyd, Finance Director. What I have for you this evening is the first of the monthly budget to actual reports that we will be presenting to you. And since it is the first one, I wanted to run through it with you and explain the format and what various things in it mean. And so I'll be, what we're reporting on are the five major operating funds of the city, the general fund, the housing authority fund, the RV park fund, the water and the sewer funds. So we'll begin with the general fund operating budget. And notice in the header, it says there, "As of July 31st." Each month that header will say as of what month we're reporting on, so that you know that the numbers in the actual column are numbers as of the end of that month, or as of that date. The columns that are included here include a description, and that just tells you what the item being reported on is. The budget number, that is the budget numbers, or the budget column, those are the budget numbers that were adopted in the budget. The actual column are actual experience to date, it's actual revenue that we've put in the bank, it's actual expenditures where we've written and paid the checks. The encumbered column refers to expenditures that we've encumbered that we're expecting to make, and so we have encumbered the funds so that we don't inadvertently spend them on something else, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And then the remaining budget takes the original budget minus the actual, minus the encumbered, and that's the amount of budget remaining. Then there's the, the final column is the percent remaining. At the top of that column, you'll see where there is above the header, column headers, where it says percent of year remaining is 91.7 percent, and each month that number will increase, it will actually decrease as the year goes on. So, and that is put there to help you compare, you know, where are we in the budget, is this percent that's remaining on this particular line, is it close to what the percent remaining in the budget is? So I just want to just hit on a few of the line items, just to give you a feel for how the report works. If we look at the very first revenue line, tax revenues, that revenue line includes property tax, sales tax, DOT taxes, and you'll see that the actual amount there is very small compared to what the budget amount is. Those taxes don't come in in 12 equal payments over the course of the year. Property tax comes in in basically three payments, we get a December payment and an April payment, that's the bulk of the money, and then we get a smaller payment in June. So that, that number, you know, won't adjust the actual until those months occur. Sales tax typically runs three months behind, so the sales tax check or payment that we received in July was actually for May sales tax revenue, and so we would accrue it back to May, so if you haven't seen it yet. On the next line, the licenses and permits, and don't worry, I'm not going to hit every single line in the report, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. Licenses and permits includes franchise fees and business license fees, and what we do is, business license fees are billed on a fiscal year basis, so in July, we sent business license renewal notices to the businesses that currently had licenses, and most of that, 37,880, in the actual column is business license revenue. And you'll expect there, on the franchise fees, we get those quarterly, so the report that you get for the month of September, well, actually October, they'll pay the month after the end of the quarter. So your October month, you should see a bit of a bump there where the franchise fees came in. Let's see, moving down into the expenditure section, if we look at the fourth row in the expenditures, it's called community support, and this is where I wanted to talk a little bit about how the encumbrances work. In the community support, that includes the 72,000 that the city gives to the Chamber of Commerce every year, and so we pay that at the beginning of each quarter. So in the actual column, you see we spent 18,166, and what that includes is the 18,000 for the first quarter to the chamber, plus some incidental expenses of $166 for something else. But you'll see also in the encumbered column, there's the 54,000, that's the remaining portion of the 72,000 annual payment to the chamber. So as each quarter occurs, when we do make that payment to the chamber, you'll see that number go down. And encumbering that money enables us to manage the budget but not inadvertently spending it on something else. Not that we would do that, but it's one of our internal controls. Moving along through the expenditures, you'll see that some of the departments encumber a lot of their materials and supplies in advance. For instance, on the police line, you see that there's 156,000 in the encumbrances, that's for various contracts and materials and services where we, we know exactly how much the charge is going to be throughout the year, so at the beginning of the year, the fiscal year, we just enter all of those purchase orders and encumber those funds. So basically, what you have here for the month of July is that revenues we brought in were 81,000 on the actual column, 81,591, and expenditures that we paid out were 189,128. So we paid out $107,000 more than we brought in, but that number will fluctuate throughout the year as, you know, revenues come in and expenditures are made. So if I move along then to the housing operating budget, it's laid out with the same format, it's page two of the, of the five pages. With the, you know, the description of the item, the budget, the actual encumbered, remaining budget, and so forth. One item that I might point out to you here is that our actual HUD, and Megan and I had a conversation about this prior to, to this report being issued, our actual HUD Housing Assistance was 132,002, and our actual Housing Assistance payments were 235,067. What's happening here is that the federal government HUD is, what they, what they want to do is they, they don't want cities to hold any Housing Assistance Payment reserves. So we have some cash that we have been holding as Housing Assistance Payment reserves, and what the federal government wants us to do is not hold that cash, they want to hold the cash. So they shorted our payment by roughly 80,000, so that the, the 80,000 is now in their bank account and not in ours. Yeah, I agree. However, they haven't taken that money permanently away from us, they're holding it in reserve for us, but they're holding the cash. So if we find we need it, Megan can apply for it, and we can, we can get that funding, it's just not in our control any longer. So, that's the housing authority. As you see there, the revenue total was 156,000, the expense total was 251,000, so the net was a minus 95, but that is primarily due to the federal government taking the cash back. The third page is the RV park.
Can you, can you show that in the budget? So there's a line item representing the amount that they have encumbered?
We can show a line here that shows you how much our reserve is, and how much we're holding, and how much they're holding, we could add that, sure. So let me make a quick note here. So then on the RV park, basically, same, same format, and the revenues that we brought in, and remember your summer months are your, your big months in the RV parks, so we brought in in July had revenues of 43,594. I don't think any of that should have been accrued back to June, but we'll double check, make sure that was all July revenue. Does that sound about? Was it? Okay, maybe some things actually got recorded in August. And then there are some expenditures of 10,542, for a net for that month of 33,000 in the positive, and then again, that will change as you move through the year.
Continue to just think that the city taking that back over is one of the best things we've ever done.
It certainly is an asset for the city, that's true. On the sewer fund, this one, I put a little additional information on the bottom of the page, which I'll, I'll get to in a moment. Here I wanted just to talk about brief, shortly, really briefly, the charges for services on the sewer fund. The actual amount brought in was 391,000, and if you look to the far right column, that was 91.0 percent, and, or that's the percent remaining of the year is 91.0, and the calculated percent of the year remaining is 91.7, which basically says to me that our revenue estimates for the sewer fund are fairly right on, and, you know, hopefully that trend continues throughout the year. You never really know how much business you're going to have, if you're going to have accounts fall off or accounts come on, so it will fluctuate throughout the year, but I think our revenue estimate was pretty good. On the expenses, the, the one thing here in the expense, when you compare it to the budget book, that I moved, dropped below the line, was the principal payment on the loan. Above the line here, you'll see that I have expense totals of 2.9 million, and then we have the debt service principal payment of 1.1, and so if we take the revenue total, total of 4.5, subtract the expenses of 2.9, and subtract the debt service principal payment of 1.1, we then have a net result for the year of 529,000 positive. So I wanted to run through this with you and, and discuss with you how that changes from what we talked about in the June 16 budget meeting. The estimated beginning fund balance that we had at June 30, 14, was a negative 205,000, and our projected ending fund balance with this new net result of 529, minus the 205, gives us a projected ending fund balance at June 30 of 2015 of 324,000. Below that, on this page, you'll see where I've recapped from our June 16 meeting, where we were talking about having a projected ending fund balance at 630, 15 of a negative 687,000. Now, the reason that that number has changed is that the council on July 21 directed staff not to make the interest payment on the estate revolving fund law. So if we add back that interest payment to the 687, we find that our projected fund balance at 630, 15 is 324,000. So I wanted to include that on this, this, this month, so that you could see where we're at in this fund. This fund may be projecting a positive amount there, but we're nowhere out of the woods on this fund, we still have a lot of issues, we're not, we don't have a resolution from the state on the loan renegotiation yet, that is still in process.
Emily, I have a question on those last three numbers. So we didn't make the interest payment, and that was 1,012,000?
Correct.
We didn't make it. Above that, the, the negative 687,000, that would have been if we made the interest payment, right?
Correct.
So we didn't make the interest payment, so that's why you're projecting still the 324?
In the positive.
Assuming that the state says, forget the interest.
Correct.
But, when we have to make that principal payment, we're not going to have enough, are we?
No, with the 529,000 there, you go up a few rows?
Yes.
That has already subtracted out the principal payment, and we have in fact already made a payment.
Yeah, we made the principal payment.
I mean, for next year.
Oh, for next year?
How much is that principal payment?
Well, the principal payment is 1.1 million, and we're projecting a fund balance, available for 324.
324, so we are?
We are still in trouble.
900,000, no, 900,000.
Roughly.
Quite a bit.
One of the things that we asked, as you'll recall, the, we asked the state to provide, to give us a graduated loan payment schedule?
Right.
Which will reduce the amount of that principal, we just don't know yet where they're going to go with that.
But they can see what our projected income is?
Correct.
For next year.
Correct.
And they could also see that we've been raising those prices, that we just about can't do anymore, okay, that's, that's clear.
Well, that was part of that whole study we just did.
Yeah, it was, it was, thank you. So this is just showing the numbers now for us everyone.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the last report is the water fund, which once again, we have the same format, so we'll stay consistent, so you'll get familiar with it, and it'll become second nature. And there we have our actual revenues on our charges for services, are, they're coming in very close to where we had estimated them in our budget. Our expenditure, so our revenues for the month of July were 199,000, our expenditures were 75,000, and we have a remaining, or that was a net of 124. Now remember, we didn't make 124,000 in that month, because there will be expenses, expenses don't happen in 12 equal amounts, they go up and they go down, so keep that in mind as you look at this throughout the year. So that is basically the report, what I'm proposing to do is to provide this to you at your second meeting of each month, that will cover the financial results for the preceding, the preceding month.
And thank you very much for that, this is very, very helpful.
You will be a huge help, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. The, the cost centers that, that utilize the general fund are going to be kind of hard to, to follow, I think, well, the one near and dear to my heart this year is the city council. We show expenditures but no revenue, and I know that that's the way it works, eventually the revenue comes from the general fund.
Actually, there is a little bit of revenue there, if you look up under departmental revenue, it's like, about 10 rows down in the revenue section, it's got city council revenue of 83,000.
How do we have revenue?
That's actually a reimbursement from the, the, it's, it's a cost allocation to the enterprise funds and the other operating funds of the city for an allocated cost percentage of the city council.
I know.
I mean, you do business not just for the general fund, you do business for the, all of the other funds of the city as well.
I, I'm looking at the general fund operating report, right? Is that?
Mm-hmm.
And I see the 83,000 is budgeted, but I didn't see?
Oh, any actual, no, okay, yes, I see, that's where you were looking. Yes, I see, that's where you were looking, sorry. That, actual that is a cost allocation that we generally will only record quarterly. So you probably won't see any numbers there until October.
So that'll be injected in here eventually?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could actually put our in-kind services in there to show some revenue.
That's at that same hourly rate, Kelly, so that won't be that much.
It's like 12 cents an hour.
This is great. Now, I would think that as the year goes along, it'll be a more difficult matter to take a look at the percentages as a whole and comparing it with the percentage of year remaining because of the fluctuations that occur. Maybe, maybe an asterisk or a footnote or something so that, so that makes your job easier?
We'll help you along.
I'm helping all of you. I studied this stuff before I get here.
I can absolutely asterisk anything that's outside of the range and give you an explanation, a footnote that will explain why it's outside the range, definitely.
That'd be nice, because there's days that go by between the time we get this and the meeting and we might have a heart attack in between.
We don't want that.
Very good. So any other questions of, no?
Yeah, just thank you very much. This is, it's been very much needed.
Much appreciated, thank you.
You're welcome.
And any public comments on this? Okay. Did you have a public comment, sir?
I did not question this as a cash basis. Are we in a cash or are we looking at full basis?
It's, in government, it's basically a modified accrual basis. The report, the actual column would be cash. The encumbered column is kind of a modified accrual because we are recording here items that we are going to pay, that we have not yet paid. So it's kind, government accounting is kind of a mix.
Thank you. Thanks again. Okay, no other public comments? We'll go ahead and bring it back. You don't require anything other than for us to receive the budget? No actions necessary? Okay, very good. So moving on to number 15, and that is to authorize the city manager to sign a letter in response to the 2013-14 grand jury report and direct the city clerk to file with the presiding judge. Mr. Palazzo, are you going to do this yourself?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll be very quick on it.
Okay.
Yeah, annually, the grand jury investigates local government activities. Now, this year, they submitted a report and there are two sections that, you know, they investigated on the city. That report is attached to the staff report, you know, the pages from, from the grand jury report. Staff went through the findings and recommendations of the grand jury and responded to those findings and recommendations, which is in the letter that submitted to the council for authorization tonight for myself to sign the letter and respond to their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Palazzo. Any questions on Mr. Palazzo?
I don't have any questions. I would like to say that I found the grand jury report to lack substance in some of its areas and in relationship to the report that they made with the city working with the county and the MOUs involved, a member of the grand jury actually called me and interviewed me and I felt that none of that information was reflected in their, their summary judgment of the facts. So I think that that should be incorporated into our response.
Thank you. Mr. Ania?
I agree. And councilmember Shalom feels that she didn't feel it was it. I definitely know it wasn't. I spoke to a grand jury member for an hour because they called me and I gave them all kinds of reasons of what we've done in that particular area. None of it was used. I understand that grand jury members are members of the public, but they have a responsibility to put the facts down and not just blow, why call to get the facts if they're not going to use the facts? We've had several meetings with the county over things that the grand jury recommended the year before. And to say this in here is absolutely incorrect. And I agree that they need to do that. And I agree, we should reflect that in our letter, that we were contacted, gave of our time and they didn't even put a response into it.
Thank you, Mr. Ania.
It also seems that, didn't they cover the issue of the cultural center in the prior years' grand jury? I mean, we've addressed that issue before. I've been, I've been on the grand jury, so I know what, how it's supposed to operate. So I'm not sure why they covered that area again. It just seems a little bit repetitive. Seems like a couple of the issues that they covered are repetitive. So I'm not sure why they went and addressed those issues again. So, you know, I know that they put in lots of hours and they deserve a lot of credit, but I, it seems like they were duplicating their own efforts. And if they contacted two of our council members and then didn't even include that in the report, I don't understand that either.
And I was told that some of the reasons that they cover subjects multiple times is that they're left with a report from the prior grand jury stating that this is where we left off with this particular subject and it needs to be followed up with. So I think that there's maybe a lack of information that's transferred from one grand jury to another to create that continuity. So I do understand a little bit of that.
Well, that's why I said, I've been on a grand jury before and if it's addressed in the prior grand jury's report, then, then there's no need to address it. And they did cover the cultural center in the prior grand, previous grand jury. So they didn't need to cover the cultural center because there's really not a lot we can do without any money. So. I don't, I mean, if I were on the grand jury and the previous grand jury had already covered it, I would move on because there's so many areas they need to cover. So I know, but if it's not completed in their investigation, that's when you pick it up and take it to the next grand jury. But that one had already, that issue had already been addressed.
Yeah, sometimes it feels like they don't acknowledge that we're working on these, on these problems and trying to find solutions, but they're without, like you say, without sufficient funding, it's difficult to come up with those solutions. But anyway, it is before us right now. Is there any public comment on the city manager's signing such a letter in response to the grand jury report? Okay, seeing that, we'll come, bring this back to the council itself.
I'll move, we authorize the city manager to sign a letter of response to the 2013-14 grand jury report and direct the city clerk to file with the presiding judge.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved?
And you're going to include?
To include our two, our comments, thank you.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawley.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now we're to our final section of today's agenda and that is city council items, legislative matters. Mr. Palazzo, do you have any legislative matters to come before us? Council, any legislative matters that we need to be aware of that you know about? Okay, very good. City manager report and city council directives. Mr. Palazzo, anything that you want to tell us?
I have nothing more to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, reports from the city council. Mr. Ania, you want to start us off?
During the past two weeks, you and I and councilman, councilmember Murray attended the local transportation committee meeting. And also I attended the solid waste meeting for Mr. Gastineau. And those are my two meetings that I went to. Went to a chamber mixer and, which was very well attended. And I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Shalom?
Thank you. I also attended the recent chamber mixer with Dr. Moshe Arshi, local dentist. I sit on the chamber board of directors and we have a board meeting this Friday. Plans for sea cruise are moving along well. I just found out that my son is graduating from the army the weekend of sea cruise. So although I'm chairing the event, I will not be here for the event. So I have a lot of pre-work to do. I also attended, was very honored and excited to be a guest speaker for the Redwood Leadership Academy for the young men and women that graduated from the academy that included all of our local law enforcement, first responder agencies instead of just the Crescent City Explorers. It was a very exciting day. They had 31 young men and women graduate and it was just awesome. So proud of those kids and was really honored to be a speaker. And I think that's it for me for the last speaker too.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
I missed most things that were happening. I had a 30th family reunion at Trinity Lake, which was great. And I didn't attend Mrs. Gastineau's memorial service as I went to Cotty Hawthorne's wedding that my daughter was in on Saturday instead and it was quite lovely. So apologize to Ron and the rest of the Gastineau family for not being there.
Okay, thank you. And I attended the IGRC meeting on the 13th. That's Intergovernmental Relations Committee. And it consists, as, as we all know, of, well, I think there were five organizations there, sometimes more. And we talk about what's happening in our respective jurisdictions and we share kinds, what kinds of things are happening. And sometimes there's, there's discussions that we have in common. One thing that we did discuss some was, was some of the, we've been known to deal with blight, but also we have a lot of the homeless issues that are in town and they seem to cross jurisdictions and we're trying to coordinate how to deal with some of that. So that's, that's a good forum to do that. It's a real casual forum, but it's a very, it's very worthwhile. Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, I attended that, this last meeting. And for those of you who don't know, next, let's see, later on, Thursday, Thursday, we're having a, a meeting that's, I guess, tantamount to a strategic planning meeting. We're going to deal with goals and objectives for the authority and we'll see what we can get going there. So that'll be interesting. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I did have an opportunity to attend Mrs. Gastineau's meeting and, and we should all have such a positive impact on, on a community as Donna has had on ours. So with that, I would like to, to remind everyone that we are not going to be here for the first week, first, ordinarily, our first scheduled city council meeting. So the next meeting of the city council will be what date, Mr. Palazzo?
September 15.
September 15. Yes. Yes, Kelly.
Rich and I, councilmember Ania and I, were also in attendance at the Home Depot celebration and South Beach ceremony welcoming Ivan, I won't even attempt to say his last name, who traveled clear across our country to recognize the Wounded Warrior Project. And it was pretty uplifting and it just a constant reminder that one person can make a difference. And then also, just going back to the legislative item, there was a medical marijuana bill that Sarah sent to us that was held up in committee that was sponsored by the California Legal Cities and the Police Associate, Police Chiefs Association. So we'll be following that to see what happens with that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Mr. Gastineau also was present at the, as the mayor pro tem, I asked him to attend.
Actually, he did a great job. He was, yeah, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else to come before us, this meeting of the city council is adjourned.